Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Well, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting, the joint regularly scheduled meeting of the TAF City Council Successor Agency for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021, and the special meeting agenda for the TAF City Council Successor Agency as well. See, if TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating, and we love seeing people in person here, I want to let you know that, and are also live streamed at www.youtube.com backslash user backslash City of Taft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received per the following. Written comments may be dropped off in a drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk at wymayfield@cityoftaft.org. They may be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 PM the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. This evening's meeting is going to begin with the pledge of allegiance, which I'm going to take the opportunity to leave myself, if you all would be fine with that, followed by an invocation, which I'm going to call upon our chief of police, Damon McMinn, to provide.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, sir. So if you would all join me, please. Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we give all the praise and glory to you, Lord. Lord, we ask that you reach out and put your wings around our city, around our government. Lord, we ask that you protect our citizens. Lord, we ask that you enter this room today and allow us to do your will. Lord, we ask that you guide us through our decisions and guide us through our work. We ask all this in your son's name, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you kindly, Chief. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cryer.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Evelyn.
Here.
And Councilmember Whiting is absent with notice.
All right, thank you very much. First item on this evening's agenda is citizen requests public comments. Do we have anybody wishing to address the council? We do indeed. Okay. Therefore, I get to read this. Citizens request public comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. And Jeremy Gregory wishes to address the council, so if you would, sir, please step up to the mic.
So usually I wouldn't come to the council, however, I'm at a loss at this point. Neighbor disputes are horrible, and I'm having one, as some of you already know, to the point where TAF PD has given us absolutely no help at all. Our neighbors, they violated our privacy with cameras, recording us in our own backyard. They've used ultra-high frequencies to hurt our dogs. TAF PD have came out, taken multiple reports. I've asked them to send it to the DA's office, to which they've failed to do. I've sent emails to Lieutenant Aranda, as well as then forwarding them to the chief. I've had no contact back from them in regards to this issue. As of late, we just got all the new trashcans in Taft, which is great, however, they pepper sprayed our trashcans in front of our house, and my wife got dosed with it, and TAF PD came out, looked at the trashcan, took the neighbor's word for it, and said, oh, she said it's just Lysol. I walk in my house, and I smell pepper spray, and I'm driving from Delano. I have no idea what's happened yet. TAF PD has already been told by our neighbors that they'll sue the City of Taft, because I'm fellow law enforcement officer, and it looks like they're playing favorites if they do anything to enforce the law on my behalf. They've built, we were on vacation, they have built and added three foot to our fence, so our fence is nine foot tall. When I went to the planning commission, the city, showed them a picture of it. I'm the one who got the letter that said, take it down. I can't take it down. It's on the other side of our mutual fence. The only way I can take it down is with a saw. Still up there, nothing we can do about it. When I called the city manager, or whoever it was from the city, they said, oh, no, don't take it down with a saw. Wait. I just want some help. I want some direction on where I can go with this, because they get away with pretty much everything. They hit our trashcan with their car, and then turned around and yelled and cussed at everyone in the neighborhood about it, but yet, if I call on anything, it's dismissed. If my wife calls on anything, it's dismissed. They can drive around the neighborhood flipping off my 15-year-old daughter, and it's acceptable. And it's not just me, it's other neighbors in that same neighborhood. TAF PD says it's okay for them to record us in our own backyard with a pole that's used to skim swimming pools. They put a camera on it, so they can walk along our fence and hold it over the fence. It's okay, they can do that. Last time I checked, I have a right to privacy in my own backyard. According to TAF PD, as of yesterday, I don't. They can record us anywhere, they can put a camera on their roof. It's okay. I've had conversations when I was assigned out here as a sergeant, I was told they're recording me in my own backyard, that there's nothing they can do. I was warned, be careful what you say in your yard, because you're going to send it to the sheriff's office. And in fact, TAF PD, their officers, told my wife that they've said if they have any problems there, go to the sheriff's office. Last time I checked, I live in the city limits of Taft. I should get help from the City of Taft, not the sheriff's office. But instead, they go there, and now I've got Internal Affairs coming at me, and now they're laughing because of all the stuff that's being sent to them on a regular basis. I just want some help. I just want equal treatment. I want someone to enforce the law in my neighborhood, which isn't happening. Put yourself in my shoes, would you appreciate someone putting a camera, listening to you in your own backyard, yelling and cussing at you, flipping off your 15-year-old daughter, hurting your dogs? I have vet bills. I've already taken all the evidence to the DA's office, they're just waiting for a complaint from the City of Taft, from the TAF Police Department, and I've been trying to get them sent it over since the summertime, and they refuse. Thank you.
Thank you for coming before the council, sir. We appreciate that. Are there any other people wishing to address the council? I don't see anybody else on the list. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item number two, council statements non-action. Councilman Evelyn, I'll start with you this evening, sir.
Well, I do have a couple of, a couple of things real quick, Mr. Mayor. Number one, we're getting really close, I am so loud on this.
Yeah, you gotta be careful about that.
Really close to the holidays, and I had abolished a parade. I want to apologize to everybody, because I really slowed the parade down. I didn't realize the band kids were going to be marching that fast, and I got out and decided I was going to hand out candy canes to the kids at the side of the road. The kids who set the tempo for the parade may as well have been running, because I could not keep up with those kids.
You're hooked up, huh?
They were, they were going. It was a wonderful parade, I had a great time, the wife had a great time, grandbabies had a wonderful time, thought it was awesome. We're in the season now, I just want to say, because obviously we're almost there, Merry Christmas to everybody out there, and remember the reason for the season, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good, sir. Councilman Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to piggyback, excuse me, piggyback lightly, just want to wish everybody in the City of Taft a happy and Merry Christmas, happy holidays if you don't celebrate Christmas, or happy whatever that you do celebrate. Want to be all-inclusive here and making sure I wish everybody a happy season, but for those that do believe, Merry Christmas, and for everybody else in and around the City of Taft a happy and prosperous New Year. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem Cryer?
Thank you, Mayor. Last Saturday, United Way and Era put on an event, like a ribbon cutting of the rails of trails, and they put like a different learning drawings on the cement and signs describing what it's all about and stuff, and it's a learning deal for the kids to go on there and walk, and it's good, and parts of it's for adults totally, adults not only, but you know, to share with the children and stuff. And they presented at the city, I don't know if the mayor would like to read it or not, but I could read it if you don't want to.
Go right ahead, sir.
It is a certificate of appreciation, and it's from the, presented to the City of Taft. United Way of Kern County would like to thank you and for the partnership and for allowing us to contribute to the community beautification. We are proud to bring a fun and creative learning opportunity for the children and families in Taft. And it was, it was a good, good deal. Councilman Bryant was there, along with our city manager was there, and our city manager gave a great speech, I have to admit that.
Long.
Very elegant. Yeah, it was kind of long, wasn't it?
[laughing]
But he did a great job, but no, it, it was, it's just one thing that's great about our city. It's a small community, but we get a lot of things done, a lot of things to do, a lot of great things for the children, as brought to them, and I'm really proud of what happens, what's going on in Taft. Yeah, there are some issues, but you know what? Our crime is not that bad. It's all small petty crime, you know, but, but to us, because crime is, is so few, the bigger ones, the little ones seem bigger, but, but overall, the police department's doing a really good job, what they're doing, and correcting it, and know who they are and trying to stop it, because, but nowadays, with the laws and everything, and different propositions out there, the criminal has more right than the police officer does, and even more rights than our citizens have, you know, because they have more to gain than we do. But I just want to thank Era and United Way for doing that and helping our city. You know, we had a nice, great parade. It was a little windy, but it was great, and it was, it was really interesting this year, see, I know I feel company with like a train coming down, down the road, you know, honking, blowing their horns, like a train whistle, and it was, it was pretty cool. It was really, really a great deal, you know. I was with the vanguard behind the mayor here, and when it got down to the end, we were done, I boogied up to the American Legion and watched the rest of the parade from there, and it was, it was terrific, you know, on that, and I'd give a great kudos to the people who participated in it, and also the Chamber of Commerce that helped get everything all set up, and also the West Side Recreation Department for helping out, and there were other volunteers out there, I hate to, I know I'm going to miss some of them, but there was other volunteers out there to help out, too, but it was fantastic. And what's great, too, is that we have our own Santa there at Fifth Street Plaza, with the Christmas tree in a little room there, the kids can drop their wish lists, letters to Santa, and also go in there and visit the Santa. I even sat next to the Santa and Mrs. Santa, you know, it's part of the Christmas season, and had a picture taken there, but it's just terrific, and you know, with Ed Gaither helped set it up, along with some other people, it makes this community great, community participation, our own mayor. I know you don't want to be mentioned like that, but he does an awful lot that people know about, but he's always behind the scene, volunteering, using his equipment to help things and do things, but you know, we have a lot of good people in this community that makes things happen, and to make this, you know, for a friendly city, and that's what makes it so great in there, you know, remember, there's a spirit of Christmas coming up. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, because it's our last meeting till after New Year's, but just remember that Christmas is about the Christ Child. It's not about commercialism, how much presents I can get, or whatever, but it's a spirit of, a spirit of Christmas, and it seems like it gets forgotten, but hopefully this year, with, with all the happenings and stuff, with the COVID and all that, things are changing, and that makes me nervous when things change, because I'm more of a traditional person, and when I was growing up, we didn't give out gifts on Christmas. We gave it out on January 6th, when the Three Wise Men came and bore the gifts for the Christ Child, Three Wise Men, and that's when we gave out our, we got our Christmas presents, and we always got more, because my parents got it on sale after Christmas, so I always got a lot of presents, so I always enjoyed that, but I hated waiting, and my friends had their Christmas, and I didn't.
I like your style.
But anyway, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
You can also pick up a Christmas tree real cheap if you get it on the 27th of December, so just something.
It'd be real dry.
Dave's College, you have obscure knowledge, yeah, just something.
Well, we have St. Nicholas Day, we put it up in our fireplace, and also some things on different feast days that we get under the tree, but not the big stuff.
I like good celebration to me.
Yeah.
Good celebration. It is, it's Christmas time. If you missed, the decorations right up here on the dais, I got to believe this is a collaboration between Yvette and Old School, that is what I thought. So Renee up at Old School, right here, is coming from our downtown. We encourage everybody to shop in Taft and spend as much of your money here as you can. There is plenty to be had. Those of you who are visitors, like Kern County Fire Chief, I encourage you to spend all your money before you leave, sir, so we'll talk about that later. But it is, the Christmas parade was a lot of fun, turned a little breezy towards the end, I know, it was a bit of a challenge. Immediately following the parade, who was out there cleaning up? Do you see that? Public Works, those guys, I mean, the wind was blowing 40 knots, and those guys were already out there cleaning things up. They always are. I mean, the last guy in the parade, the Public Works guy are at the end of his shadow. It doesn't matter, that's the way it is. And you are right in that there are so many people involved in making these things happen, and you, you always risk not thanking all of them if you thank a few of them. Thank everybody for being there and participating, and all of you helped make that happen. Merry Christmas to all of you. Take advantage of, this is the first year with our community Christmas tree, Ed Gaither has been singled out, as he should be, because he has dedicated himself to that, along with the blacks and several other volunteers. It's a beautiful Christmas tree, something we can all be very, very proud of. If you haven't taken your kids up there or gone up there, I encourage you to do so. They've got great hot chocolate, I bought a bunch of it myself, and it's, it's part of the season, it's the first year for that part of our season, it's going to be going on henceforth, I've got to believe. And lastly, we will not get together before the New Year. Next year is the New Year, and we're going to hope that we put some of the challenges of 2021 behind us in the rearview mirror, and I'm quite certain that we will. Don't let your celebration, however you choose to do that, be the beginning of the end for you in the New Year. Don't let it get away from you. Be responsible, have a plan, make sure everybody stays healthy and happy. So Merry Christmas, everybody, Happy New Year, look forward to seeing you in the New Year. All right, next up, we have Planning Commission Report. We have Planning Commissioner here this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Happy New Years in advance, Merry Christmas in advance. Just so anybody knows, if they want to get me a present, my birthday's the 27th.
Oh, my. There you go, everything's on sale, we talked about that.
Exactly. The biggest surprise probably was my mom, because her birthday's the 27th, too.
Oh, my. She did that on purpose.
Wasn't a great first birthday for her, I think. Anyways, we're going to be probably talking about a couple of items over the course of the next six months still. We again reviewed more portions of SB 9, which is changing the face of how you do land development in cities all over. Now, for us, it's probably a little less of an issue, mainly because we have plenty of land, it's not that's the issue to build, but in essence, any new lot now can be a two, two-unit lot, even the single-family residential areas. How we're going to address that is still up in the air, we're in the process of still doing the reviewing, and I think Mark is spending a lot of time trying to figure out what portions of the law actually mean. One of the real problems with laws being written these days at the state level and federal level is the precision that should be done with the language is highly lacking. So it's a, it's a problem for Mark, and I'm sure he's probably mugged Jason a little bit about it as well. The second item is, again, we're continuing on with our downtown community plan. We should see the next of meetings in, say, February, March, maybe timeframe. We've had two very good, one Zoom meeting, a well-attended second meeting, given that it's located mostly with the downtown area, we had a nice turnout of downtown business owners or operators, and we'll probably be seeing that on the agenda off and on now. Anybody in the public who wants to take a look at what's already being done, simply needs to go to the city's webpage, and it should be, I think, on the front page, a connection to go to our planning, the company we've hired to do the planning, they have set up a dedicated webpage. So anybody who wants to know what's happened at the last two meetings, see what's going on, make comments to Mark, then they should go to the city's webpage. And once again, you need to, if you want something to happen, you got to speak up. Got a lot of good ideas at the last meeting we wouldn't have had if we didn't have people there to talk to us. So have, again, a good Christmas and New Years, and see you all next month.
All right, very good. Thank you very much for the report, sir.
What's the old saying, Jerry? If you're not at the table, you're on the menu?
Next up, item number four is city manager statement. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and just wanted to point out, since we are in the holiday season, if folks see things that need to be done around town, to reach out via our reported concern website for potholes, lights out, people entering buildings they shouldn't be entering. We're, that time of year, we ran out a few individuals already starting warming fires inside of vacant buildings, so I think the chief can contest to that, it's a huge issue, and if we can stop it before it turns into a structure fire, we would prefer to do that and get it boarded up. So report a concern, it goes to multiple employees, personal devices, so it doesn't go on la-la land, and it'll get taken care of according to the priority. And I believe the chief had something to say, I didn't see department reports on here, but if we could give him a few moments.
You know what? Public safety is a critical component of quality of life, so if you would please, sir, step up, Chief McMinn.
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, I want to give you some information about some city employees that have their extended tenure with the city. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming for the shop with the cop. Basically, we did the toy drive last week, and it was 500 cars. If anybody got out and about, it was pretty wild, so we took care of a lot of people at Taft and the Taft area, so it was wonderful. My guys enjoyed it a lot, and y'all.
That's incredible.
I just wanted to bring to somebody's, to everybody's attention, Tari Morgan is an employee with the City of Taft for five years, at the CCF for about four and a half, about a half a year with us. He is a citizen service officer for us now at the PD, and he has five years of service. We have Robert Gomes, who is a patrolman for us, 15 years of service. We have Tanya Sprouland, she is 15 years of service, and she's our senior dispatcher at this time, doing a great job. And Valerie Mattson, of course, 15 years of service, she's our animal control officer, and we love to have them, they do a great job for us, and I just wanted to let the city know that, you know, we have people that are loyal to us and stay here.
Long-term employees, and they do do a good job. I'm going to call upon you to do one more thing, chief, before you leave the podium.
Absolutely.
We had a discussion earlier, and there was an issue that took place out in the public, and there's a victim, all right? In order to have a crime, you have to have a victim. Well, there's a victim to this particular crime, and I spoke with that, that victim, and he said, look, I asked him, I said, did you, did you call this issue into TAF PD? And that person said, you know what, they're real busy, and I know they got bigger things to do, and this is not that big of a deal, so I didn't do it. And I said, well, you probably should have, and I would let, if you would please, chief, let our audience know what you told me. What is the right procedure and why?
Absolutely. People need to understand that if you have issues in through our city, please contact our police department. We have to have it going through our reporting system, goes through our dispatch, enters into our RIM system, therefore, we can track crimes in certain areas, we can track where individuals are hanging out at rails to trails or wherever that we have issues there, and that allows us to go over and patrol those areas heavy. If you don't call in the concerns, if you don't report it, then we're not aware of it, and we don't spend our resources in that area.
All right, so watchful eyes. The eyes of the community are helpful to law enforcement, but we've got to inform law enforcement, so make that phone call.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you very much, chief.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next up, city attorney's statement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say Merry Christmas to everyone, and also, I probably don't say this enough, I can guarantee you I don't say this enough, but I truly appreciate the opportunity to work with the staff here and with this council, and it's a pleasure dealing with the citizens of Taft. This is a special place, and I deeply, deeply appreciate it, and again, I know I don't say that enough. So thank you very much, and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everyone. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you very much for the kind words. I know the people in City of Taft appreciate your service as well. And you're right, you don't say it enough, so I'll look forward to you saying that at least once a week. All right, this evening, future agenda requests. Gentlemen, any future agenda requests?
I do not.
Hearing none? Then we'll move forward. With Consent Calendar Items 7 through 14, all items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would like to comment on? Seeing none, those items are item number seven, the minutes from the December 7th, 2021 regularly scheduled meeting. Item number eight, the payment of bills, about $198,000 worth. Item number nine, resolution declaring the results of the November 2nd, 2021 special municipal election and such other matters as provided by law. The recommendation there is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, California, Reciting the Fact of the Special Municipal Election Held on November 2nd, 2021, Declaring the Result and Such Other Matters as Provided by Law." Item number 10 is the second reading, adoption of ordinance number 845-21 pursuant to the special election results for Measure 8. Recommendation there is a motion to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance" Recommendation there is a motion to adopt an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Taft," adding Chapter 21 to Title IV of the Taft City Municipal Code for the purpose of establishing and imposing a locally controlled one cent transaction and use tax, sales tax, to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for protection of essential city services and to protect Taft's long-term financial stability. Item Number 11 is agreements with the State of California Department of Tax and Fee Administration pertaining to local Measure eight and required resolution. Recommendation is a motion to approve and adopt, first, an agreement for preparation to administer and operate city's transaction and use tax ordinance, and, secondly, an agreement for state administration of city transactions and use taxes, and, third, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, California, authorizing the mayor to execute agreements with California Department of Tax and Fee Administration for implementation of a local transactions and use tax, and for a resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, California, authorizing examination of sales or transactions and use taxes records. Item Number 12 is cancellation of the January 4th, 2022 meeting. Recommendation there is a motion to approve the cancellation of the January 4th, 22 meeting of the City Council. Item Number 13, increase to state minimum wage. Recommendation here is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Taft, Approving Automatic Increases to the Hourly Wage of City Positions Impacted by the Increase in the State Minimum Wage." Item 14, recognized obligation payment schedules, ROPS 2223, for July 2022 through June 2023. Recommendation is a motion to adopt a resolution entitled "A Resolution of the Successor Agency to the Taft Community Development Agency of the City of Taft, Approving and Adopting a Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule for the Period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023 pursuant to the provisions set forth in the Health and Safety Code, Section 341177J, AB 1X26. Secondly, direct staff to present the ROPS 2223 to the countywide oversight board for approval. Does any council member wish to remove any of these items from the Consent Calendar? Hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve Consent Calendar Items seven through 14.
Motion, second.
I have a motion and a second. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
I did, thank you.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Eblin?
With the exception of an extension from item number seven for last week. Yes.
And Mayor Nor.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, next up, Item Number 15. Agreement between the City of Taft and the County of Kern for fire protection duties and enforcement of state fire marshal regulations. City Manager Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Taft contracted with Kern County Fire Department for fire protection since May of 2007. City residents have been, for the most part, satisfied with the services provided to date under the current contract. During a July 2020 Kern County Board of Supervisor meeting, county staff presented a study of fire rates for contract cities within the Kern County Fire Department, including the City of Taft. The study was completed by an economic development firm, the Nadelson Dale Group. The study used calls for, of volume, call volume to determine a cost of service to serve cities and proposed drastic increases for fire services. This study was completed without any knowledge or input from contract cities, including the City of Taft. The results of the study were ultimately accepted by the Board of Supervisors. As a result, many contract cities, including the City of Taft, hired a fire consultant, CityGate, to study the cost of the Kern County Fire Department, investigate other potential options and ways to potentially reduce the proposed contract costs from Kern County Fire. After lengthy meetings and negotiations with county staff, the City of Taft was able to display a flaw in the county study, which did not credit the city with standby time for additional fire, staff and equipment used for oil production, oil production industry. Industry costs are recovered by the county through property and other taxes paid by the Taft area oil and gas producers. County did agree that the study overlooked this fact and has discounted the city fire contract apportionment by 49.3%, bringing the original full cost recovery amount down from 2.43 million to 1.23 million at the full six-year cost recovery contract amount. The proposed contract allows for six-year phased-in cost approach as shown in the attachments. The benefits of the Kern County Fire Department outweighs many other options that were explored. Staff recommends approving the proposed agreement between the City of Taft and the County Kern Fire Department for fire protection duties and enforcement of state fire marshal regulations.
Thank you, City Manager Jones. At this time, I would, let's see here, that is not, yeah, okay. Recommendation is authorize the mayor, city manager and the city attorney to sign an agreement between the City of Taft and the County of Kern for fire protection duties and enforcement of state fire marshal regulations. Is there an impact on the budget? Yes, there's gonna be an impact on the budget. For those of you behind the camera there, we have as a guest this evening, the Kern County Fire Chief. Fine young man who I will tell you took the reins of this. He wasn't in on the beginning of these negotiations, but he was here at the end of the negotiations. He's gonna be here to see through the course of disagreement in this contract. As young as he is, I gotta believe he's gonna live through several of them. So if you would please, sir, step up to the mic and introduce yourself to the people of the City of Taft.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name is Aaron Duncan, Fire Chief, Kern County Fire. I have been your Fire Chief for roughly five months, but I've been with the Kern County Fire Department for over 20 years. As the mayor said, I took over these negotiations that were well along the way. But we've had really good open communication. I know I've had a chance to meet the mayor, talk with him, talk with the city manager. Our communications have been excellent. I know through this process, I've gotten to know the community of Taft better and what your expectations of me as the Fire Chief is, and I believe you've understood what it is that we provide to you and how valuable our service is. I hope that I can live through many, many of these contracts and I look forward to serving the City of Taft. If I have, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me anytime and I'll answer any questions today. Thank you for your time.
Okay, do you have, do you have a question for the chief?
I do have one, a little facetious, but I didn't know, did you have to get a waiver to get them to hire you at age 10?
Ah, yes, yes, I hear that a lot.
Piggybacking on what the, the mayor was saying, but that's the only question I have for the Fire Chief.
Okay, you know what? I want to point something out. During the course of these negotiations, and, and they were lengthy, and there was, there was a lot of sharing of information, there was give and take, there was, I'm not gonna say there was pushback, defensive position, maybe that would be a good, what do you think of that? Would you agree to that, chief?
I would, sir.
Okay. What we did agree to at the end were the numbers that City Manager alluded to, but beyond that, we agreed as a city, as did the chief representing Kern County Fire, that we will continually look for opportunities to streamline the service provided by Kern County Fire, which has been excellent for the course of the last 10 years almost. At the same time, we're gonna have an open dialogue all the time, because if there is something that your personnel or you yourself or your staff see and bring forward to our staff or the city council that is going to aid mutually for us as well as lower the cost, lower exposure, make things more efficient, we are going to really endeavor to keep those lines of communication open and to reach out, if nothing else, from time to time, to reach out, say hi, just say, you know what? Things are going good, haven't seen anything new yet. But, but we really need to cultivate the, the language and, and the contact that we have had. So I appreciate the fact that you sat down in a hot seat, you know, when the last chief left unexpectedly before we had a chance to finish these negotiations. But I will say that I myself, on a personal note, enjoyed communicating with you and the fact that you were willing to listen to those things and understand that this contract, even though it is for the next six years, it began as a seven-year contract, but then it, it shrunk to six so that we spent 12 months actually going through the process to get to where we are today. But we will continue to communicate and we, we are mutually reliant. So we look forward to the continued service from you, chief, and you coming over here and buying us lunch from time to time.
Yes, sir.
In our restaurant. All right. We wish you a very Merry Christmas. Thanks for coming over, Chief Duncan, and introducing yourself to the council. Do you have a question for the chief?
Yes, I do.
Well, he's right there.
I just want, I just want to give a compliment to the Fire Department here in Taft. I had an issue about maybe two months ago and basically they were, they saved my life. I'm very hard-headed, very independent. You know, I get sick, I usually fear of being ill with and a, and a next day 12-hour flu or something, but this time it didn't happen. And I got very sick and the Fire Department came to my home, literally carried me down to the West Side Healthcare District. They made sure I got there because I didn't want to go. And they said, you're going. And they knew me, but, you know, and it wasn't for them getting me there, if I stayed another day, I wouldn't be alive here today. When I got to the hospital, I had 25% oxygen in my lungs and they had to work it over there twice. They had, they didn't think I was gonna go through it and, you know, make it through the night, but I did because I told them I'm not planning on going nowhere. But it, it was a strange experience, but I want to thank your department and the Taft Fire Department for what they did. I hope they do the same thing to other Taftians here in town. If they're getting like, like I am, kind of, you know, bullheaded and independent and stuff, that they take and say, you know, you're gonna go. And that would, you know, that would make our life here better. But that's why I thank you for that. And another thing too is, you know, we're a small town, a small community here, but we have a lot of great pride and stuff. And we're being hit by the oil industry and all the extra costs we've gotta bear with and everything. And if you can, you know, in the future, you know, work with our mayor and, and the council, that what can we do to reduce, keep our costs down? Because every penny or every dollar that goes out, there's one less we can do on the streets or law enforcement and other things. I know we got the 1% tax pass is gonna help out tremendously, but we lost our prison. That was where the money was at, right there for us and our income we got from that, that kept us going pretty good and we lost that. And so we're, you know, we're trying to wash in our paintings because it's not normal years right now. It's abnormal what's going on. And you know that through your experience and all the things, the mandates you have to go through as a, as a Fire Department. But I do want to thank you, I do want to, your department, especially here in Taft, for what they do. They're great people and I just want to give my thanks.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Chief, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas. Thank you.
All right. Happy Holidays to you too. Drive careful going back. So I would ask the city attorney, because it's not on here, but do I need a motion to authorize the signing of this agreement?
Please, yes.
I, I should think so. Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to authorize the mayor, city manager and city attorney to sign the agreement between the City of Taft and the County of Kern for fire protection duties and enforcement of state fire marshal regulations.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?[1762.16]